I'll give a quick. And we are being recorded, hot mics. And we are being broadcast live on Zoom. Do we have anybody participating on Zoom? Okay. Typical. So we're going to roll call. We're going to prove the meeting minutes from our last meeting. I'll call each case individually. I'll give a quick summary of the case. And then I'll call you, the petitioner up. And we'll have you come up to the podium over here, state your name and address for the record. We'll swear you in because all testimony given here is done under oath. And then we'll let you tell your story in your own words of what you're looking for as a petitioner. So first item would be roll call, please.
Member Alfonso. Chairman.
Here.
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 Okay, we need to approve the meeting minutes from. Well, now this says from March ninth, that. Yes, it's April thirteenth is really what it should be. On the agenda. So meeting minutes from April thirteenth. Anybody have any corrections?
I've got two on page three. At the top. Says, Member O'Brien stated that the. The proposed business will not have a negative impact on other surroundings. It should be removed. I want to add, because it is an opinion, not a fact. That's what I stated. Second one is near the bottom. Member O'Brien identified that there is not a required setback from the exterior side lot line. I don't know that I said that. I was reading from the table. And the table reads basketball equipment at least five feet from interior side lot line and ten feet. And it's. So I was reading. So this should be. Member O'Brien identified that there is a required setback from the interior side lot line. And then the next sentence is accurate. We discussed it and then agreed upon. The five feet.
Anyone else?
I have one. Page four, paragraph about halfway down the page where it starts with Commissioner Johnson. So for consistency's sake, Member Johnson is referred here as Commissioner when member is used throughout the rest of the document. I didn't see Commissioner being referred to in any other. So just for consistency's sake, changing it. And that's all.
Any others? Okay. So a real call for approval.
So moving.
Yes, Member O'Brien with the motion and Member Castaneda with the second.
abstain.
Hello, Ryan.
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So that brings us to our first case for this evening. And that is going to be case twenty-three dash eleven, a special use permit for a salon at nineteen eighteen Ridge Road. The applicant in, correct me if I pronounce your name wrong, Chanel Dillard. And it's for special use permit for salon at nineteen eighteen Ridge Road. Currently in B two downtown. Transition district. It's a multi-tenant shopping center. Our materials give information about what the surrounding. Districts are. We do have an application. We have. A response to the special use standards filled out by the petitioner. We have a letter of owner's consent. We have a floor plan and then the staff exhibits that were put together. So in a nutshell, the subject property is a tenant space within a multi-tenant shopping center. Located a corner of Ridge and God's Chalk and incorporates several addresses which are noted in the. Information. And the subject property, including the multi-tenant building and associated parking lot, is two parcels selling common ownership. And the building portion is fully located on partial dash zero three eight to the east. And the parking lot is located on the adjacent parcel oh three seven to the west. And again, we're looking for a special use permit to operate a salon. Beauty Junkie Studios within a nine hundred square foot unit. Again, nineteen eighteen Ridge Road in the B two downtown transition zoning district. So come on down. Step up to the podium and if you can state your name and address for the record.
I am Chanel Dillard.
I will.
Two two zero North Gate Court, Glenwood, Illinois, six oh four two five.
Okay, and raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, self, you got? Alright, thank you. So I kind of gave the history and some of the technical information. Why don't you tell us in your own words what you're trying to do?
So basically, I want to only operate a salon, a full-service salon. So there will be cosmetologists as hairstylists and then makeup artists as petition and tooth nail techs. So full service, we would cater to adults and kids. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. Only operator salon.
Okay. I will hand it over to the board to start with some questions. Member Castaneda, let's turn it up. Or do you want to pass?
I'll pass for now.
A new function. You could pass on the boards.
Especially if we have nothing to say.
Yeah.
I just really have one question that concerns you. Location, the operation. One of our functions is to ensure that when we're approving. Her nets is to ensure that they benefit general welfare, health, safety, and those kinds of things. And I noted that your. Your request is to operate the business, the business hours, I think. Tuesday through Friday up to ten o'clock. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes.
That's pretty late.
Okay, so. From what I know, just because I'm from a suite, I'm like, I make my own hours. But the time right now, so I do bad appointment. And some of the services that I do are about two to three hours long, depending on what they get, like sew ins or something like that. So we. Most of our appointments start at eight AM and then some of my clients get off late. So then I take them after work. So they getting off at five, I take a six o'clock and then I gotta clean up. So that's why it's six to ten, just as far as we will be in there operating, not still taking people in at ten.
Well, what time? That sort of begs the question, what time do you close that? If you're there cleaning up the doors and you have, obviously, you might have somebody in the chair to try to finish up.
Right. So if I have somebody, I technically take my last client. Around seven and then. I've just closed after that. I didn't, I just gave a ballpark estimate of a time. That's really what that was.
Because ten o'clock would concern.
Yeah, because I thought about that when I thought about everything else in the area and what time we can have a close.
So are you saying maybe seven o'clock would be a reasonable time? I'm not saying you have to be out of the building.
No, I get what you're saying, but yeah.
Customers after seven.
No customers after seven.
You wouldn't have a problem with that.
No. Or the last customer at seven.
No, no customers after seven.
So mean, no walk-ins.
Right.
I'm okay with it.
That's the only question.
That was the only question I had.
Okay. Member Cat.
Good evening. This is just to clarify for me, this, this space is, has been used as a salon in the past?
Yes, it's, I believe for the last ten years at least, is what Julie specified to me.
So are you buying, are you just leasing the property?
Just leasing. It'd be like a three-year lease and then after that we were. Want to see how that goes.
Now during, during the course of your day, you, do you see, this goes back to the hours of operation? Do you see? Certain peaks or quiet times and when your appointments or walk-ins might come?
Um.
You were describing the people who might come early before work.
Yeah.
After work, but.
I usually, I usually get the stay at home moms. Or around really early. Then I get like a little quiet time around. Two and three, when people are picking up their kids and then, 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 like I said, I get maybe one or two that want to come after work. So my downtown will probably be around the time the kids are getting out of school. Summer, of course, will be a little different. Summer is usually. From what I experienced, I haven't actually owned a salon, just a suite. So my clientele is usually back to back getting a salon.
So just to talk about your experience, how many years have you done this? Where have you worked?
Um, so I have worked at two open floor salons. I've done it for about four years now. But I've worked at two open floor salons, one in Country Club Hills, one in Sandy Park. And then I moved into. A suite. I like the open floor plan. The only reason why I moved into the suite is because. There were a lot of teenage girls coming into the salon with. Like some ruckus, you know, at that particular salon. So I felt like they didn't really have control over. So I went to a suite where I can just be surrounded by my own clientele.
Sounds, so thank you for sharing. I don't have any more questions at this time.
Still passing or?
No, it's pretty, yeah, I think that you all kind of asked what I don't basically have. The only comment I had, it's not related to this, but it's just a comment on the application. I don't know if it's the way my PDF saved, but on page seventeen, questions six and seven are all jumbled.
Mine did that too.
I can make out what it says, but some sort of glitch.
It's just. I think it's, you know, Texas all there. It's just that when you print it, yeah, when it comes on the screen.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay. Guess it's my turn. So you've got these other services that are going to be going on in that space as well. So are these? People, direct employees for you of yours or they renting space from you?
Renting space. They will be both renters. I am thinking to have commission for makeup artists, just only because makeup artists. Everybody don't need a makeup artist every day, all day. So they probably wouldn't make as much to pay the weekly booth rent. So I would just take a question of.
Their event oriented weddings and things like that. Okay. So. On a typical day, you've got five stations. For hair and makeup. So, okay, so nine, nine service providers in here. So it's eighteen customers at a time and. Is everybody going to be by appointment only?
I know we, the point of the salon is to open up for walk-ins. Realistically, in a salon, there's not a day that everybody's going to be there all day, every day. But on any given day, it's like maybe a Mother's Day weekend or something like that, people getting services. It may be where everybody has a client. But those are kind of rare, more so around big holidays or something like that. But for the most part. I am looking to have. Service providers be in there for a certain amount of time. Between opening, closing and maybe shipped out. I know some people, the way it works now is they have kids. So they're working around their kids game and stuff like that. So if I find service providers that already have a clientele. They pretty much are responsible for that. But I do have it to where I would be advertising and advocating and bringing people in. So that the people who don't have such a big clientele still make money.
Make them, keep them busy. Okay. Um, sounds like a good, a good plan. So if, if the constraint mentioned by Member Johnson of. Saying like no walk-ins after seven. And then just to clarify the point that it would be, seven would be your last appointment. So you would be, your, your seven o'clock appointments would be the last people that would be coming in. And then after you finish them up, then you clean up and then you'd be closing the door. And is that, is that kind of what you envision?
No, no.
So you would say it'd be more like five would be your last appointment to get done by seven.
No, I, I would be saying that, or I was, my questions and my concern was that, that the, let's, you know, we have the proverbial. Close sign. That close sign goes on at seven o'clock. You don't, so, so you're closed. You don't bring in, you don't allow any more customers. If there's a customer in there, the door is closed, the door is locked. You finish up with that customer and that's it. But you're not, you're not having any more walk-in customers or appointment customers. Seven o'clock is when we close.
So you're saying whatever the typical appointment timeframe is. She'd have to back off that seven and that would be the last appointment of the day.
No, I'm just saying, if, if you bring somebody in, say six thirty, right? You close the doors at seven and the door is closed, business is closed. You finish up that person and you're done. But you don't allow other customers to come in after seven.
Okay.
It's just, you know, for, you know, I just don't think it's, well, for lots of reasons.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Just, so the walk-ins, I would have to make it to where I don't take, I don't accept walk-ins after five. Just because. I would have to make it to why I don't set walk-ins after five because. If somebody wants in.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. You can take walking, you, you're the judge of how rich your business is, right? So what, all I'm saying is. You have to determine. When are you gonna profession? When are you gonna stop taking walkers? Because at seven o'clock. And nobody, anybody who's in here at seven o'clock, well, will have to finish them up. They're in here before seven. But the door is closed at seven. So you finish up and that's about the best that I can.
So how long is it? How long do you usually spend with the customer?
It just depends on the service. I can do a set of eyelashes in about an hour and thirty minutes. I can, if there's a class, he said in about forty-five. Forty-five minutes. It just depends. I can do a silk press in about forty-five minutes. I kind of time myself. But I do have clients that get like wig installs and weaves and stuff. So that takes longer.
Two plus hours.
Yeah, you know.
So what we're kind of. Encouraging you is that. Whether you're making an appointment or accepting the walk-up, so maybe five, five-thirty might be a. Reminder that you shouldn't be taking on any more work for the day at that hour. To comply with what Commissioner Johnson suggested.
Right, yeah, Commissioner Matt. I, I guess the, the, and this is just for thought. It's, if, if you say the door is closed at seven. And that's it. And I decided I'm going to bring somebody at six fifty-five. And then five minutes before closing and I'm going to finish them up. And then they're, they're from seven to nine. That may defeat the purpose of having businesses close up.
It's no different than a restaurant, exceeding somebody.
Exactly.
So you have to have a timeframe ahead of your, your closed door.
So I can't, so, you know, ideally, I'd like to have a, you know, hard set saying that's it. You know, you can't, you can't do that to a business because you know your customers and you know how long they take. But all I'm saying is no more walk-in customers after seven o'clock.
A question for staff. As far as what the board can propose in a motion. It would merely be a suggestion to the village board for their review and vote on this for, correct?
Yeah.
Of, of the, of the special use permit. But it would be up to the village board as to make that, whether that's a binding.
Yes.
Condition of the permit or not. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? We don't have anybody on Zoom still.
Did you have any?
I did have a couple of questions.
Fire away.
I know in the application, it said any internal things that I did, I didn't need a. Let me, I don't know if this is why I was being so, I wouldn't need a building permit for anything outside of the building. I would need a permit. I don't know if this is.
But for making changes to the property?
Yeah.
I think that depends on what the extent of what it is you want to do. If you're changing the structure or adding utilities or taking away utilities. You probably need a permit.
Yeah, I'm not.
If you're just doing some light.
Yeah, salon to salon, probably.
You know, hanging mirrors and. Yeah.
You're not changing an outside sign or anything.
No, I'm not changing the outside sign. The two things that I just really took, actually, the salon is really good. The one thing I did want to do is because we will be doing lashing and waxing, that kind of, you need like a little personal space. So there was a spot on the floor plan where I asked maybe for permission for a seven-foot wall. So I wanted to know about that because I, I did call, but I never got a call back. And then the block windows, I was trying to see if I can make them clear instead of frosty. So I can let natural lighting.
Yeah. You'll, you'll need to. You may need a building permit. You're going to only have an exception by the fire chief before you. Before you can open.
Yeah.
So Angela, just to confirm, we make a recommendation that the hours be.
Yeah, I got babies to get home to anyway.
Any other questions from the petitioner?
No way.
Okay. So just to clarify for the board. If we're going to add a recommendation for a adjusted closing time from what is provided in the materials. If we're going to vote on it, just want to make sure we all agree on that, what that time is going to be for the recommendation that goes with this. So right now, it's been stated that the recommendation would be adjusting the stated closing time. And when we get back to it here, so I make sure I recite this accurately. Give us a second. Okay, so. As stated in the materials, hours operation will be Monday, eight to four, which we have no issue with. And Tuesday through Saturday. Eight AM to ten PM and we are going to adjust through the motion that the Tuesday through Saturday be eight AM to seven PM. Will be the vote. We own agreement. That's what we would be voting or at voting on the recommendation. And then on a different time. Okay. I just don't want anybody else going, wait, I really, I like eight or seven thirty, you know?
Understanding too, that you're trying to balance making sure that your clients that are coming off work still have those weekday appointments that they can get. So we do understand that that's a balancing act for you.
So I should ask, what's your feeling on that? Be honest.
So again, okay, so again, like. I just have to kind of get in the formation of being in a salon with certain hours. Because like in my suite, I know today, after I leave here, I got a client because I have to push her, you know, I had to push her back. And sometimes depending on like. Palm season is here and stuff like that. It might overflow depending on if they, it's a full service salon. So if they got a makeup appointment and a hair appointment and, you know, they're trying to get nails done all in one setting, it kind of. It maneuvers time.
I mean, I, I'm not, I can't make suggestion to you on, on what to do with our suggestion, our recommendation. But I'm just saying, I think it's your right to, to say, oh, I disagree with that. I mean, if it's going to affect your business to the point where. Maybe it's no longer viable for, for you to be in that spot because of that restriction. Now's the time to say something or, or, or in front of the village board to say something.
Yeah, it's not going to make it to where I can't be in the spot. It's just going to take adjustment. Like I, I get what you're saying. So I did think that might have been a concern when I was looking. No, I've kind of tried to see how everything else closed around there.
You wanted to be conservative.
Yeah, even when I worked at other salons, they had a, the times later, but they did have a time where they was like, you gotta be out at this time.
All right. I think we're clear on that. Any questions or comments from the audience or from Zoom? Pretending to this case. Okay. Well, then I guess what we'll do is I will entertain a motion. To approve this case. Does the building owner have any questions for us?
Do you have any questions?
I have no question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So once again, we'll entertain a, a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to. Recommend that approval of case number twenty-three eleven. Grant a special use permit for salon in the B two downtown transition district. For beauty junkie, junkie studios at nineteen eighteen Ridge Road. Incorporate. Findings of fact into the record to include recommending that the hours of business operation for the entity. There with me for a second. Oh, you, okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. The hours of operation will be Monday, eight AM to four PM, Tuesday through Saturday, eight AM to seven PM. And closed. And closed on Sunday.
Okay, motion by Member Johnson and a second by Member O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Uh, I'm gonna vote yes because the property was a former, was an existing studio, um, in that spot. So I'll support it. Yes. Good luck on the next step. All right. It brings us to our next case, which is gonna be case twenty-three dash zero nine. Is on page twenty-one of our packet. There we go. So case twenty-three dash zero nine, special use permit for a spa at one eighty-three fifty Kedzie Avenue, Suite two hundred. Uh, and again, correct me if I mispronounce your first name. I'm gonna go with Sakia Garrett. Sakia, okay. Sakia Garrett, special use permit for a spa, uh, again, at that address, one eighty-three fifty Kedzie Avenue, Suite two hundred. It is in a B three general business district in a multi-tenant shopping center. Our materials, um, give us what the surrounding districts are. We have an application from the petitioner. We have a response to special use standards by the petitioner. We have a letter of owner's consent. We have a floor plan and we have staff exhibits attached. Um, a little background on the case. The building is a two-story building with a variety of tenants. Traditionally, this building would be considered a professional office building with individual tenant suites. Uh, with a shared central entrance. The current use, uses span from medical office to professional services to personal services. And salons, which more closely resembles the assortment of uses typical to a multi-tenant shopping center. Uh, everybody is using a common parking lot. Um, cases, uh, pertaining to this, uh, property from the past are twenty-eighteen, a case. Eighteen dash twenty-nine that granted a parking variance for a hair studio. Um, at that time, special use permanent was not required. And in twenty-twenty-one, case twenty-one dash seventeen, granted special use for a learning center and a parking variance, uh, to Suite two zero one. Uh, let's see here, what else is pertinent? It's stated in the materials that the applicant has been operating the business without the required zoning permit and business certificates. Um, previously operated, uh, she previously operated in the neighboring community that did not have the same requirements as Homewood. Is now working with village staff to come into legal compliance with the local requirements. Any fines or citations for such unauthorized activity are handled by village staff. Uh, the Plaine Zoning Commission should consider the facts of the request as they relate to the special use standards. However, the fact that the business has been in operation until recently allows the applicant to speak from experience operating at the subject property. Um, so just to clarify that statement, uh, my question to staff is. We are not adjudicating the, um. Non-compliance with village requirements and are strictly concentrating on whether or not the property should be granted the special use. Correct? Okay. So with that said, um. Come on down. Price is right. So you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it is Sakia Garrett. It's one eighty-three fifty South Kedzie Avenue, Suite two hundred. Uh, Homewood, Illinois six zero four three zero.
And freeze your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So what you got?
Always.
All right. Um, so that'll open it up to, oh, I'm doing, I'm skipping a step. Tell us in your own words, please. What, what, uh, you're, you're requesting a special use permit?
Yeah.
So tell us what you want to do.
Okay, so it is a full-service, one-stop shop, salon, spa. Um, pretty much I provide, I'm a licensed esthetician, so I provide, um, facials, massages. Um, body contouring, this is all non-invasive, so no surgery, no needles or anything like that. Um, pretty much spa days, holistic care, y'all need feasting. So anything self-care, mental care, decompress, that's what I provide.
Ian, we've got a rough, um, floor plan. I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Okay.
Um, what you're showing a lobby in two treatment rooms.
Yes.
Basically the setup.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll leave it to the board to ask more specific questions about how you're planning to use that. All right, um, if that's it, then I'll open it up to the board. Who would like to start? You only get one pass per minute.
I understand.
Just made it up.
So, good evening. I hope you understand that, um, this isn't the first time we've had somebody for us. Is, um, operating a business for a while without all of the proper approvals. So my question to you is, how long have you, have you been in operation before you were found out?
Um, so actually, I was, okay, so I was on maternity leave and I had, um, like a team, like an employee. She was actually, because she's does the same thing I do. And it was for two, I believe, two months this one or three, almost like two months to four months. Cause I came, my, I think I signed the lease January first. That's when the lease was for. Um, I was unaware that I had to come down to get my business licenses when they showed up. And the person who was in there at the time, she never told me that the fire department came. And lo and behold, I didn't know I, cause prior to when I was in the suites, we operated under like the tier of whoever building it was. So we didn't have to come down to the village and get approval. And that wasn't communicated to me. And so it was a surprise to me when they came knocking on the door. So I immediately shut everything down and came down and filled out the application.
So, um, what, somebody made reference to a neighboring community or places where you.
Right.
Before, could you?
Yeah.
That to us?
Yep. So I was in, um, I was in Worth, I was in Hinsdale, I was under salon loft. So well, solar loft, salon loft is pretty much where you like, pretty much like the last person. You just access twenty-four seven, you can go any, create your own hours. Um, and that was it. We didn't have to do anything with the village or anything. So I was just assuming that I didn't have to do that this time. Now I came from Worth where I had more of a commercial space. And I did have to go to the, they actually told me the bit, before I even got approved or before I even gave any money. They was like, go to the village first because I don't want you to pay. And then they, you know, deny you. So this situation, um, I asked and he never said anything about, I'm like, okay, is this everything? But I did not ask the question about the village because that wasn't on my radar and I was on maternity leave. And it was pretty much like, okay, you know, I'm moving to Flossmore. You, what do I have to do? Sign the paperwork, getting two months deposit free deposit. And that was it. Cause I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't come in and then backtrack and then run the rest of my business. Getting shut down. I've been doing this way too long to have that, you know, that type of error. So.
So you're not the first applicant to come before us.
Hmm.
Who, um, yes, uh.
Hmm.
Um, landlord is, was, I would say, not of, not much help to you.
Right.
In advising you of the possibility for this step in the process.
Right.
Um, land landlords, of course, they're more, more of the property owners, their motivation is to lease the space. Always on, like, you know, and. Some of the property owners are better than others, advising their. Perspective tenants of, of, uh, some of the steps that they might have to go through. Some aren't. It's, it's always an education process. It's a little bit of tension. Uh, certainly it creates situations like this. You're not the first person who has.
Person, my neighbor, so.
And I hope you understand that, um, because it, it does come up. That, um, it, it's, it can be considered an uncomfortable situation. Because you are, um, asking us to, um, approve something. Because you already have a signed lease and you've been more or less operating this for a while. Uh, so that might put, uh, a little bit more pressure on us to ratify. These series of events that we have absolutely no, um, uh, involvement with otherwise.
Right.
You know, um, we're here to. Interpret the villages ordinances, the zoning ordinance, um, but we're. And we're certainly here to encourage economic development. But, um, I hope you understand that in some ways this, um, this puts a little bit of extra pressure on us. Under the circumstances. Um, is your, uh, landlord listening in on Zoom or? Okay. Yeah. So let's have a, I like to do thought experiments.
Gotcha.
Um, what would happen if we would deny you tonight?
Um, well, if you deny me, then I have to look somewhere else. I mean, it's not the end of the road, honestly, so.
We've also, in situations like this, analogous to this, we've, um, we've maybe, um, uh, continue the case. I'm not, certainly not recommending that.
Okay.
But, um, we have recommended the case to literally haul the, uh, the property owner in. To, um, let's say, instruct that person in, um, uh, paying better attention to the obligations. He has to prospective tenants like you.
Absolutely.
Um, uh, to make things go much more smoothly. So.
I agree.
You understand all this? Okay. So I have no more questions or comments at this time.
And Rob Ryan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So your testimony is that you've been in operation about two to three months.
Hmm, two months.
Two months.
Yeah, when, yeah, when I found out that, yeah, I had to come do an application.
Did I hear correctly? There was someone substituting?
Hmm.
And who was that?
So she's a, she's another body tech. She has her own business. So she was just stepping in for me while I was on maternity.
Have you received your certificates or licenses?
Yes.
And they've been provided to, uh.
No, they never asked before.
No.
Well, states in our materials that, uh, you previously operated in neighboring community. You're now working with the village staff to come into legal compliance with local requirements. Also attendant to that, on this next page, it says staff is awaiting response from the state. At the time that this report was written, uh, understanding the requirements for the spa services of body contouring, cavitation, et cetera. Cavitation is like a section of central.
No.
Normally.
No, there is, um, there's a big misconception, I believe, that she didn't know what she, whoever researched the information. Don't know exactly what body sculpting or body contouring is. There are different layers and different divisions of it. You have your non-invasive, non-surgical, and then you actually have invasive surgical. So you actually don't have to be licensed to do body sculpting or body contouring. So I'm actually licensed because I'm a esthetician. And then I, I have advanced certifications in body sculpting because I wanted to take a class for it. So, but you don't have to be, it's not a state regulation or any statute to say that you have to be a licensed physician to do body sculpting.
Okay, let me ask that then.
Okay.
What? What, uh, permits, guarantees, licenses, does she need to operate her business?
You, you don't know what the state requires because they haven't, they haven't got that to us. They, um, we asked, um, what the state requirements would be because we cannot license businesses as a non-legal community. This, they said they needed twenty-one days and about thirty days. So we really don't know, um, what the state requirements are. Uh, we do know, we do require that you have, you know, like, did you give us your, at least your, any licenses the state requires?
Then that will be my aesthetics license.
Yeah.
I don't have it on me, but I can email it over to you.
Was there? Is there a application process that she has to go through with submitting all these requirements?
Yes.
So that's been started or not?
That's been started.
Okay.
I guess my question, continuing my time is, uh, how can we make an informed decision tonight without everything completed? Why don't we just postpone this to another meeting? I mean, if we're, if we're waiting for information.
If the state gets back to staff.
Well, the, the. I mean, this certainly should be done on a contingent basis. That is if. It could be done on a contingent basis and that meaning that if, if, um, the state comes back and says, you know, there. These things have to be done, uh, they would have, she'd have to stop business until they're completed. If there's some licensing issue, then she would have to stop business, right? Uh, until those are, those, those matters are corrected. Because we can't, we, we shouldn't wait for the state to get back to us. They made their, this is not a big concern of theirs. We, we, we've communicated with them by letter or just by.
We, we sent an email, uh, writing response that they had twenty-one days to get back to us. Twenty-one days passed, we called them, they said they had to have two, three days to call us back, representing their response.
So, so I don't think it's. I, I don't want to take your time.
I don't know how she can continue to operate without the proper licenses, whatever they might be. Should she perform something and it go awry, does the village have any exposure with that? Because we have approved it, but we haven't received the information from the state. And therefore she's continuing to operate and receive clients and perform. I, I, I would go, no.
I guess my question would be, um, obviously, one, we're contacting the state. To educate ourselves, we're not contacting the state. Because she's, by opening the business, her spa business, she's violating the law, uh, present. And so we're not aware of her violating the law. By opening this location, this is, um, if we, as long as she has licenses. She's, we provide those licenses to, uh, to the village. What we are concerned about is whether or not.
What we are concerned about is whether or not she's meeting the zoning requirements.
Right. We can't, we aren't able to license business ourselves.
We have authority to license the business itself. So we, if the if the state says you shall, you know, license or or all body contouring, estheticians. And you shall have license X as opposed to C, we wouldn't have control over that anyway. So. I think member O'Brien's point was, because the village isn't sure on what the requirements are for body contouring and cavitation. And is seeking guidance from the state as to what the state requires. Those services shouldn't, we're issued, we're we're considering a special permit, a special use permit. So can we say that the special use permit can be for her services except for? Body contouring and cavitation until such time that there's an agreement between what is required by the state and what she possesses certification and license wise? But then how do you have a operating business that we said, well, you got to take two, these two things off your menu? How do we police that? Not to say that you purposely undermine that, but that we have to be able to to monitor that. So that, so that's, that's why you're bringing up the point of how could you operate the business without? Assurance that we know that we're meeting all the requirements on our behalf and on your behalf for that special use permit? Well. I'm sorry.
Once the business is certified, it would be very hard for us to do anything. Unless it's a, unless it's an issue of the state's itself.
The entity who gave you those, you took a class for body contouring, did the entity where you took the class from, did they give you any guidance as to what was required or?
Well, the thing is, it's not, you don't need a license or you don't need, so body contour, because it's with therapy. These are manual things like a, like wood rolling up, you don't, it's not regulated. So it's not FDA regulated and it's known license. There are schools like the National Laser Institute, which where I went, where you, they teach you like all of non-invasive, advanced body contouring and all of that. Now, there, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if, because you guys are unaware, I don't know that process. But it's literally everywhere around the city of Chicago, even Flossmore, even some in Homewood. So I'm just confused on why I'm having a hard time getting approved when your spas are literally doing non-invasive body contouring, so.
Well, I think there are some like, I I looked them up, but I know there's one at Flossmore, but it has a medical doctor who runs the clinic, so. You know, in some cases and for some, some types of uses, it requires some medical.
Right, depending on the service or the treatment, right. Correct. Right.
Uh, yeah, I I think what would be beneficial and and I don't, and I don't propose waiting on the state of Illinois. Because basically, even if you, if the state got back to you, they're not going to provide you with a legal opinion. And and so, you know, we could be waiting this time next year. But I I I would, you know, based on your expertise and your knowledge of the area. I would certainly, you know, have preferred to see, and you didn't know this because we didn't require it. You know, some more specific information about the whole process, the licensing, and that's one thing. I'm not, you know, I I don't, this is non-invasive. This is all exterior services and, you know, off the top of my head, I would think that it probably does not present an issue. But I don't know that, and that I think that's the hesitancy of some of the board. But I don't, I I I think our first priority is to look at the zoning itself, the building itself and whether or not we have problems with. Things like parking, building size, hours of operations, the operations itself. And I think after we, we we, our job is to look at that. The next question is obviously if we have concerns that someone is operating a business for which they may not be appropriately licensed. Or there's a problem, let's do investigate that and to and and make and make a determination after that. Angeles seems to be saying is that, well, once it's approved, there's not, there's no, not much of a way for us to go back and say, wait a minute. You, you know, you're operating a business without the appropriate license. Having said that, though, I would think, though, that if you're you're a licensed esthetician. That if you are operating your business without appropriate licenses, the state and anybody else can come after you.
Correct.
And and shut your business down and take your license, yeah, right. So if I, if I went to the village and said, hey, I know she's operating this business and I don't think she's properly licensed. And I will file an act of complaint to the state to have her licensed, the licensing body could move. And the village could also move to to. The village could, could take its own action, just like we said, you know, there's a gray area here, we're just going to close this. We don't know what to do, so we're just going to close this down until that, those questions are answered. And the village can be, anybody, the fire department can do that problem. Right, any, anybody could stop you from operating a business without proper license. So I don't propose to have you, this is my personal, I don't propose to have you wait to hear back from the state because you may never hear back from them, really. And 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 so, to the extent we have questions about, and maybe you can propose some, something about, you know, what. You know, it's your job to sort of educate us as best you can about the license, you know, what licenses you carry, what what's necessary to operate the business. And it looks like you've told us what's necessary to operate a business from, from your point of view. So the question is whether or not we accept that. And I don't know that we're going to get an answer, this matter would have to be, you know. You're not going to get an answer, for my experience of that. And so I would propose that that at a future date. I I propose the conditional approval, but I don't think that's going to happen, but you could do that conditional upon. With the understanding that staff may obtain, obtain information from the state, which requires this matter to be moved this. But I don't think we should be holding up a business, waiting on the state of Illinois to get back to us about what the requirements are for spa service. Because the state of Illinois said, look, you want to know what the requirements are, go look up the statute, go go look up how we regulate spa businesses. And answer it yourself, have your, have your village attorney do that and 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 then do it. But other than that, we're not going to give you an opinion on that. All you're going to get is something pulled from from a general regulation about life, who has to be licensed. So I don't think that's going to give us anywhere. So I would, my proposal would be, you approve it with those conditions. And and the, that, actually, you 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 approve it with no conditions. Because if if there's an issue that's going to come back, and it turns out, let's say we do get information that she's operating the business. Without the appropriate licenses, then then she's going to get shut down anyway. So there's, there's nothing that you can do that. You're not, unless this, unless the board wants, the village is asking the village attorney render an opinion about this issue. I don't think we're going to get an answer, and she's not going to be able to operate her business. And I, you know. I I I hear what member O'Brien is saying and 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 I respect the concern, I think that's right. But I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna get the answer that we need. So the best thing for us to do is, is to get the answer that we have and then with the. Understanding that she's, she's going to be regulated. Okay, so. Okay. That's my thought. Member O'Brien, any more questions?
Just one, it's pretty perfunctory. We have a drawing of the two treatment rooms in the waiting area. And at the corners of those drawings identify square feet, which totaled six hundred and seventy square feet. And everywhere else on the standards for special use and on the, let me flip over to where this is. On page thirty two, the non-residential zoning review and elsewhere, it identifies gross floor area as thirty four square feet. As opposed to six hundred and seventy. So I'm wondering, obviously, it's an error, I just want to clarify that. Page thirty two in the lower right hand corner.
System versus proposed, system thirty four, proposed thirty four.
Yeah, that is definitely wrong.
Should be six seventy?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the only thing that I would say with regards to Commissioner Johnson's comments are that. We always have had questions about salons. We went into some lengthy discussion about that at the time of the ordinance update. And since the ordinance update, we have received and approved some salons that have. Services that were not necessarily stated before in previous. One of them happens to be a full-service salon. And it listed, you know, nails and hair and beauty and so forth. I don't know what beauty is, quite frankly, all of these things make up the beauty of an individual. But I I think that staff's question with regards to looking at. Village staff have contacted the state of Illinois in order to understand the requirements for spa services. Specifically, body contouring, cavitation and so forth. Well, it was a concern to the staff of the village. I would defer to staff's concern. In all of the other applications for salons, there wasn't a concern and an attempt to reach the state. In these particular services that are mentioned, there was a question. I'm not as pessimistic that the state will take an inordinate amount of time to respond. Again, I think Commissioner Johnson's comment about contacting the village attorney if necessary at some point, that that's a good suggestion. In other words, we need a better clarification of the services for this particular salon. That's my thought.
Member Johnson, anything additional to what you had already stated?
Well, member O'Brien makes makes a good point. I I guess my question, I I put it back to staff, what was the concern? Staff made the comment in material, what was the concern of staff?
I keep just looking at a list of the services and just. We've had several of these applications for body contouring, I think maybe five applications. And we weren't familiar with how it fit in. Generally do require that, you know, we see the medical office, they require a license. We usually require certifications and licensing as part of our operations certificate. Because we weren't sure what was required this week. We actually didn't think it would be such a difficult task, I think, you know, that we'd be able, we'd be able to just like look it up on the state website and find it out if we can. It's, you know, these uses are, I don't know if their state just doesn't trust them directly. We just, I think, didn't think that it would take as much effort as it has, so.
Yeah, and and that.
And that may, may or may not be a concern.
Kind of the difference between what's based on that, non-invasive and what's not at all enough.
And and I appreciate that, member O'Brien, in that respect.
This is a classic example of the reason for the special use permit. It's classic. And we need that.
The the problem that is expertise and knowledge of what.
I'm not arguing that, no, I agree with you. Going to say in the issues, the questions, the concern by the staff regarding this particular application. Is a classic example of why we need as a commission. A special use for us to be able to, it 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 shouldn't be a permitted use.
Well. We don't know that.
We don't know that, that's the problem, because we don't, right.
Let me frame it this way, just to keep, keep moving here.
Oh, I'm not talking about this particular application, I'm talking about special use in general.
Yeah, no, I get, no, that's a good valid point, something to add to the list of considerations, get educated about it. I think that we may have exhausted the discussion on this, but I think there's two ways to look at it. You have to consider it for your vote, the board has to consider it for its vote. Basically, is if you feel that this is a lack of information that is pertinent to the issuance of a special use. That may influence you to hold back and vote no. If you feel that this is information that's not pertinent to issuing a separate special use. And you you can either say, you know, I'm going to vote yes on it, it's not an issue, or make it conditional as member Johnson stated. And add that to to the motion that you make. So I'd like to suggest maybe that the questioning, get back to the particulars of the property and the business operations. So we can get get to all the information out there and make an informed vote.
Mr. Chair, there's one other, two options, probably a third.
Look for a continuation.
Continuation. And perhaps a very short continuation. Because I don't propose, as I expressed, to wait, you know, on the state of Illinois. Right, exactly, so we're gonna, so the third would be, when is our next meeting?
Two weeks, I think.
Well, can I ask then, before we take a vote on the motion itself? Can the board take a vote or take a poll as to suggesting a continuation prior to making the vote for the motion? Okay, I would suggest let's do that after everybody's had a chance to ask more questions about the property, the business and the operation. So, member Johnson, do you have any more questions regarding the business itself?
I think I know where this is going. The applicant, you know, keep that consider that, as opposed to having this vote on it. Continue with two weeks, see what, you know, what transpires, probably nothing. You know, at least we might come back a little bit smarter. Some of us may contact the village attorney and get his thoughts on it. And then be able to, two weeks from now, say, vote possibly. For it as opposed to voting tonight to what seems like it's going, speak for anybody else, just to deny it, let's chase that problem.
Well, I was going to ask that question, but I wanted everybody else to have a chance to, to field questions.
Right.
But I will ask that of the, of the petitioner. Prior to us polling.
Mentioned it as the.
Yeah. Okay. No problem. Can we cast any, any questions?
Yeah, well, just one for staff. In the due diligence period of asking staff, would it also maybe be possible? To reach out to surrounding businesses who also provide this and see that they have any, it could. It could be that the reason you can't find it on the state website is because it's, you know, inconsequential. It could be. And maybe if you got a little bit more vetting from other salon owners that provide that service, maybe that could be. But, you know, additional assurance for. The permission to make a decision on the other. Land use and special uses that typically come before us is the building, the land use, those things.
I don't recall. These two operations. Specifically being listed in any of the special permit uses we've considered for a salon. Wait, for some time. I, I don't think I've ever. I can't recall of any cases where we've had this specifically listed. So I understand the. Staff not being aware of what the requirements are. I mean, petitioner stated she's aware of other businesses doing this. If they didn't list it. We didn't know about it. Then we couldn't consider it. So you're the first one that's brought this forward. Maybe to your detriment, maybe not. So. Any other questions, Member Kessner? Hours of operation, parking, building use, anything else?
No, I mean, you know, the memo sort of states that because this, it sounds like an interesting building, but we've never been in there. But. Yeah, but because this has been a building in continuous operation, there's never been any complaints from neighbors about parking. You know, I think that it would not intensify. Well, that's what the memo says. You know, because of that, you know, I think that from, from those fronts, I think that. That. We'd be in the clear on that, on the, on those aspects.
Okay. Um, so my turn. So, yeah, the parking. Uh, it, it takes a couple of reads to what's put in here to really follow it. Uh, and to arrive at the, the part where the parking variance is, is it just, it appears that it complies. So, um, there's a twisted route to get there, but, but it complies. Yeah. So. Your floor plan. Let me, let me get to it. You got the three spaces. You got a waiting area, you've got treatment room, treatment room. Okay, number one. Restroom facilities? Or are they common in the building? Okay, so not in your space, but there is in the building for all spaces to share, just like the parking lot. Okay. Any? What would be considered hazardous waste? Uh, or chemicals from the treatments or is resulting, resulting from the treatments that you would need to dispose of and any. Um, what, what methods would you be required to employ for that?
Um, I have it as a container.
And that is for catching, for disposing of?
So like if it's like, like the chemical pill or anything like that, if you want to put it in there. Or the little ampoules that I, I use, I put them in there just so that, you know, if there are any blood or anything like that from. Me extracting or whatever.
Okay. And, and that's a requirement from the.
From, yeah, it's sanitation. So, yeah, it goes with your license. So sanitation is a big part of your license when it comes down to sanitation. So.
Okay.
Got to make sure everything is sterile, wiped down.
It's a general question I always ask. Because if the building didn't have.
Okay.
The ability to. I mean, it's, I, I assume that's a pickup that you arrange. I'm sure with other salons in here, that's already on somebody's route to collect that. Okay. Well, I, I don't have any other questions about the business. I think your business hours are fair. There's already other salons in the building. The owner's given a letter, so he approving. Um, you leasing this, so he, the building owner obviously is not concerned about oversaturation of. Uh, one kind of a service in, in, in the building. So I think just for order of business, what I'll do first, you've heard the concerns of the board. Um, regarding the potential licensing information and the knowledge, uh, that we may or may not have at this time to consider that. For, for a vote to a special use and also towards the fact that I'm going to take a poll. On whether or not we feel this case should be continued. But in all fairness, I would like to give you the opportunity prior to that, uh, to make a decision voluntarily yourself if you feel that. You feel that, that you'd be willing to say, I'll voluntarily continue the case. And, you know, it, it's a decision that you're making about, well, what do you think they're going to vote? Or what do you think they're going to say about continuing? It's up to you. I want to give you the first shot over the bar.
Sure, no problem. Okay, so first I would like to say this is not my first rodeo. Like, this is a third location. So I've been doing it now for three years.
Including the services that we're talking about.
So that's in every village. Yeah, so even when I went from work, I had to come before a board and say what I'm going to do. They approved it. Um, so honestly, it's unfair to me that you all or the staff or whatever is not educated in what I do. Or the research before I came down because actually I filled this out beginning of March. I was given the wrong application and I came back. I mean, there was just a lot of back and forth. And from a professional standpoint, I know what's needed. And like I said, and I've actually spoken to an attorney and because it's not, if it's not a state statute to say like, oh, well, you need this in order to open up here. That shouldn't affect me, but it is apparently because nobody, I guess they're saying they don't know exactly what it is, but. That's, yeah, I don't, I don't see how that would fall on me because they don't know exactly what body concern, especially because I've been doing it for so long. And I've never run into this problem.
Well, I don't know what is a problem. It's a question.
Well, it's a concern.
You indicated that you have done this in other locations.
Correct.
And that you just stated that you went before a board and it was okay. Okay, why didn't you have the presence of mind to come to the village, to come before this board? To come to the village office and find out community development, discuss it with them.
Because that was never presented to me. When I moved in.
You had the experience.
Correct.
In other locations of doing that.
Correct, but the first location, when I, Hensdale, I didn't need to come before a board. I just signed a lease and moved in because it was a suite. This location here is a suite. When I was at work, that wasn't a, that wasn't a suite. It was a commercial space. So it was an old H and R space that I was occupying. This is a suite. So I'm thinking I am under his umbrella. Again, that wasn't communicated to me and I would never jeopardize my business. Because my business is long-term. So I wouldn't just up and pop up and then get fined and then that's an embarrassment for a fire department to come out and put a. Orange sticker on my door. So it's not, it wasn't purposely done. It was more so, I didn't know. And it was an honest mistake and it's a lesson learned, so.
You just stated that you went before a board in another location.
Because it was told to me that, so it was told to me that I had to do it the second time. The first time I was in a suite, I didn't have to do it.
So you knew that there was a process, but you didn't come to the village office here?
No, so what I'm saying is. It's a process wherever, but because the landlord didn't tell me that I needed a license as a standalone, that I had to get a permit from you all. Just like I didn't have to do it the first time, the second time I did. So I'm not thinking, and I'm on maternity leave. So for me, it's like, I need to find a spot, get in. What do I need to do? I'm signing out the paper and that was it. But I wouldn't purposely, like I said, come in and that wasn't explained to me.
Okay, so what we need, Chairman, is a. Motion for continuance. Correct?
Correct.
And to request that to do an expedited inquiry. And away we go.
No, Mr. Chairman, just that. The questions that are being asked are, are being asked in fairness and then just trying to make sure we make the right decision. The points you raised are good points. Okay, you didn't, you know, the points, Member O'Brien. Questions he's asking, my questions too. We want to accommodate your business. Uh, so we're not walk away thinking that we, we're, we're trying to find every way we can to make sure. Everything from parking, all of that's taken care of. And it looks like everything else is aligned. There's just this one issue that we're just not fit committed with. And so, I think we can probably all agree, and I certainly don't think it would hurt you. Your business or your plans, I hope not. For, you know, two weeks and just so we can get clarified, clarification on. On, if there's anything else we should have been asking. And I, I suspect, and, and, you know, I don't bet, but be willing to bet that we'll be back here in two weeks and that will be.
Okay, so that's contingent on, you received the information from the state?
We, we just have to, for home, no, 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 we're not, no, no, we're not gonna. If, if, if we have no information from the state, we have no information from the state. We'll make our decision based on. You know, our having reviewed and perhaps talk to the village attorney. I, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm an attorney, so I'm certainly going to look, look myself. So, and I think we, we have smart people. They're going to look at it. I think we'll be ready.
Well, I also would add to that, that, um, I would say that, um, from your, on your own behalf. Um, if you've got. I won't say the word official, but valid information that you can bring to present as to what is and what isn't required. By all means, gather it up and get it in to staff. You have to come in and get some license and certificates copied over anyway. Um, get they, get that information as well so that we have something to, to review.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we. Have a motion to continue this.
I'll, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll second that.
So staff, we have a motion to continue to the next meeting for the purpose of clarifying. Some of the uses that would be pertinent to the special use permit. So, Nico, so the motion was made by Member Johnson and seconded by Member Cap. Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, um, and it's better than a, a, uh. A no vote or a no, or a yes vote that's uneducated. So let's get educated and, and come back and do this the right way. So it's all above board.
Just business, it's protocol. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, third case, twenty-three dash twelve. Yes, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a five-minute recess. Due to the, uh, long timeframe here.
We have to vote on that.
I don't think so. I don't know, do we? We're gonna take a five-minute recess. And just a reminder, we're still on Zoom. We're still on hot mics. All right, so we're on to the third case. And let me just state for the record. That both of the previous cases did have public notice, uh, given in the Daily South Town. I forgot to mention that actually in both of the introductions to those cases. It is in the materials. But I'll just add that in there for the record. So, case number three, uh, case twenty-three dash twelve, limited map amendment, rezoning, select R-one properties to R-two. Uh, this is a case that we, uh, punted on last meeting. To get, um, more information on. So the package that was, uh. Provided us for this meeting has, uh, more, uh, information and some revised, uh, information, including some labeling of properties. So there are six staff exhibits and there are two responses to standards for a map amendment. So again, in a nutshell, Village Hollywood is requesting a map amendment or rezoning of sixteen parcels of the Rabbit Slow neighborhood. From our one single-family residence to our two single-family residence, the rezoning of the subject properties is requested. Because the properties are not conforming to the R-one zoning district minimum lot width and area requirements. Rezoning the subject properties will facilitate continued investment in a neighborhood of aging but well-maintained homes. Uh, and for the record, uh, it is noted that the new information added since the four thirteen, twenty-twenty-three memo is in bold. With that said, I think what I'll do is defer to staff to give us any. Summary that they want. For, for maybe what has changed or to reintroduce certain aspects of the case before we open it up to the board for questioning. And out of due diligence and transparency, uh, before we start, I will just ask Board Member Cap. Who does reside at a property that's under discussion. Um, if he intends to, uh, either recuse himself from the case or if he intends to sit and vote on the case. Just for transparency purposes.
You, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make it clear. And you know, that this is an involuntary rezoning on my part. I am not the petitioner. And, um, I could use strong words. This is being foisted upon me and my neighbors. Um, you might be able to tell, uh, by my. Uh, tone and my comments already that I am opposed to this. And so to answer your question, inasmuch as this as an involuntary rezoning. Following the petition for which I had absolutely no motivation or no initiation whatsoever on my part. I do intend to participate fully in tonight's discussion.
And you intend to vote?
And I intend to vote.
Okay. Duly noted. Staff, reintroduce, reintroduce us.
Two, two points. Uh, one is, I think you said we hunted last week. We did make some. Last week, so we didn't have to visit certain issues. Um, so like, we're not, this is not, we're not starting.
It was, yeah, it was a continuation.
Continuing.
So to put it in a proper term, sorry for my. Yes, yeah, we're not restarting. We are continuing from where we left off with new internet information introduced for clarification. Yeah, I thought I shouldn't use the term punt.
And I don't know the distinction. Well, I don't know what you're referring to.
Right, there, there was, there was an issue that we, we voted on. Angela, maybe you can, but we, we decided that we were going to go ahead and draft. Uh, because someone had said, well, let's wait till everybody gets here. And we said, no, we're not going to do it. For that purpose, we had enough, we had a quorum. And we decided to go ahead and vote on that issue. I just don't want to go back over that.
Right, we, we decided to continue it to, um, to this meeting for a public hearing. Um, and a vote and ask for additional information. The additional information was. The labeling of some of the exhibits for clarification, as well as the catalyst, the impetus for this application. Which was brought on by the owner of one property who had requested. A parking pad off the driveway. That request was denied. So then the owner asked if the property could be. Rezoned, uh, to change the property, which we cannot do. We cannot change one property. So we took a look at. The entire area and if there were other properties that would make sense to rezone, um, sent letters to all the owners. And give them an up. An opportunity to oppose the request. And, um, then we published for it. And in the event that this is. And um then we published for it, and in the event that this is um. Denied, then the owner, the original property owner would come back to the commission with a request for variance.
Was there?
He is aware of.
Were there any responses to the public notice? Or any other communications?
Got responses that are on page. Fifty of the um the responses that we received are on page fifty of the um staff report. So there were two. Ten responses. That were, that buried. And that was a bigger group of properties, that was a larger area that was originally made of two, that is what is being started right now.
It from staff? That it from staff?
Yes.
Okay, I'll open it up for more question and comment from the board. Picking up where we left off as best we can, I'll start at the uh left end with member Castaneda.
So I guess my question for staff or. I guess maybe for Commissioner Cap and anyone else who has, so as I read this, it seems. Kind of like they were just taking what. Parcels were already non-conforming and sort of just bringing them into. Appordance with the rest of the new zoning code, and the way I saw it, it kind of seemed like this was going to just be. A chunk of what we're going to wind up being, what we're going to wind up doing. As we. As this uh zoning code sort of breathes and matures and we we kind of get a sense of all of the different. Uh quirks of it and areas that need to be refined, and so. As I read this, it it all seemed that, you know, the what was proposed up. The only one question that I had in it. Was the request for a parking pad and increasing impervious lot coverage with that versus. Some of the residents concerned about stormwater runoff and how that might be a concern. You know, specifically in the subdivision, but. Other than that, it it seems something that is fairly straightforward to me, and so I'm curious as people who live there. Uh and know more about the specific issues in the neighborhood and and the concerns that those might be.
So. Is that a direct question to member Cap, or is that something that you're gonna be looking for in his comments?
It's what, something I'll be looking for.
Okay.
So that's what I'm curious.
Okay. So, okay, if we keep going and let you catch that at the end, or do you wanna address it now? Okay.
I I will, you know, because I'm try, I I think I I have the same concerns as as member Castaneda. Uh and as I expressed last week, I'm, I've read this thing three times, I don't know what the issues are, so. I am certainly anxious to hear from uh member Cap whether he votes, choose the vote or not. He seems to know the area, but in terms of the information that was provided to us last week. And the the last time we were here and the information that we have now, which is certainly more detailed, I think. With these non-conformities, what what was suggested, I thought was a pretty smart thing to do, I commend staff. For for looking at this and making a proposal. And I certainly, you know, look forward to be educated about, you know, what the concerns are. That I I I just, you know, I I thought um the staff did an excellent job of looking at these issues and bringing them forward and. We'll go from there, so I I I stand ready to to listen and learn, I'd like to hear from member Cap. I would ask, Mr. Chair, if you could hear from member Cap, uh now, it seems to, I've studied this matter and. And knows the number, so.
Well, I was, my opinion on that was, I thought, to get everybody's questions and concerns out, let member Cap adjust them altogether. Just in um as efficiency.
I, I, the.
If that, and if it is okay with member Cap.
I'd I'd like to be educated, but that's fine.
Okay. Member O'Brien, any questions, concerns, comments?
I have several. Um I don't know that there's any flooding in this area, the flooding, according to the comments, uh staff. Are related to an area a little bit to the west that was not considered as part of these seventeen uh properties, correct?
Correct.
That's the.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's, you're right, but.
Okay. I still don't understand uh what was agreed to last time, because I read the minutes. And number Johnson moved to continue the public hearing for the following meeting, there were no stipulations, so as far as I'm concerned. There's any, everything, anything and everything to talk about.
Yes.
I'm not gonna do that, but.
No, that's.
There there was nothing, that there were no stipulations. Um at the last meeting, there was uh myriad of discussion. About the issues. My concern is the village just uh. Went through an entire zoning code update, entire. And in the materials that we received, there's an acknowledgement of that, and also the fact that. Um as part of that update, the Village of Homewood lot area and with appropriateness. Analysis was conducted, that was a deep funk analysis that never went anywhere. The purpose of it was to, as we, as it was described to us, was to seek large lots that could be. Improved with another residence, and there were something like, I don't know. Sixty-five or something like that that they identified. This alternative. This particular amendment of rezoning was not discussed at all during that. Entire update of the zoning code. So my question there is, it was not relevant to the consultant. And it wasn't relevant to the staff at that time, why does it become relevant now? Well, in the course of the conversation, the last meeting. At the end of the conversation. It's an old accent, the more you talk, the more something drops. It came out that this is because of an applicant that came forward. Because he wanted to put a pad, and if you read all the materials, uh a parking pad next to his garage. Uh which is perfectly acceptable, it's in the, in the new code and other people on that and other locations in the village. However, that apparently triggered something. And his particular application. Was bundled with fifteen or sixteen other properties. And. In just a quick comment, I don't see any reason for it. Uh those properties that's in there in that condition for a long time, we just went through an update. There wasn't one question, one comment, one anything regarding these properties and this condition. What troubles me about all this is the fact, and I don't recall this happening. For the entire time I have been on the commission. How we treated this applicant, this applicant came forward. Had a question, there was an exchange of information, questions with staff. He came back. And he made a determination to make a payment. Okay, that payment entitles him to that process, which includes a hearing. Before the commission, that never came forward. That case, he paid his money, a case number was established, a case description, the materials. It was then bundled into something else, that individual unfortunately. Did not have the opportunity to come here, we are a quasi judicial body. And literally, he didn't have he or she, I don't know what it is, what what the person is, a day in court. He's never treated an applicant resident like that that I know of. So I have a genuine problem with that in and of itself, it doesn't preclude in my mind. That because an applicant came forward, paid the money, and should have an appearance. It doesn't preclude that from happening, although the staff wants to bundle that, because there are other neighboring. Properties that may have the same issue. That individual could have come forward at the last meeting and testified. There's no reason why that person couldn't do that, as a compliment to what the staff was trying to do. It just doesn't make sense to me, at any, as a measure of good faith, I would recommend that we refund his payment to him. But that that would be my. My concern. On page thirty-nine, in bold, it states at this time, staff do not have other limited areas. That's a good statement, but it should be, I believe, does, staff does not have other limited areas of parcels. If they do come up in the future, for whatever reason. I would either, I would recommend either they don't bundle them, or they allow individuals to come forward. With the bundle and not have such a. Experience.
Any other points?
I think.
Anything else, any other?
Not at this time, I may, but I don't, I don't.
Okay, remember Cap, I'm gonna skip the order a little bit again to give you the end time here to address everybody's concerns all in one fell swoop. Uh at at first, I thought this was a clear-cut administrative, I didn't even know why it was even put before us, I thought it was kind of straightforward, but the more I read it. Um it does get confusing, and remember, O'Brien, I think you made some really good points, how does one applicant? Change a neighborhood, and staff said, well, if this doesn't go through, I'll have to come back and ask for a variance. Why would rezoning be considered part of the process? Why didn't he just come in and have to ask for the variance? Um now we're dragging a whole neighborhood into into a parking pad. Um and I I think I get it, that the maybe the view from staff was, let's clean house, and I think the view was that the rezoning. Cleans up some of the non-conformities, it makes it easier for the residents to to uh do various things. On their property and not encounter restrictions for because of those existing non-conformities. Um but the other side of that coin is, because this is such a small. Part of the neighborhood where it's small lots jammed together, that could be seen as detrimental by those residents. That they don't want their the neighbors to have a a freer uh ability to do whatever they wanna do on encumber. Um and maybe that's the reason for resisting the the um the rezoning, so I guess that's what we need to hear. From the residents who have not shown up here, except for Mister Cap, who's about to um educate us. So uh and I will say to the point here about flooding, uh I am a resident of the of this neighborhood, one block north. And there is an underground uh water source that runs diagonal across these properties. And this particular uh i- intersection is prone to flooding. Um and in fact, this parcel, this block is prone to flooding. Um and and there is a property on the corner um there that. That has had to have extensive work done, and the village has done extensive work there on that street to try to alleviate that flooding, so. Just to clarify that point there, uh. So with that. I'm gonna defer to Mister Cap to um answer the concerns stated by the board, and then as a resident, offer his own. Uh take on this.
Just clarification, uh you you just, you stated the concerns raised by the board, we didn't. Of some members of the board raised concern, others.
Some members of the board have said that they have concerns and would be interested in. Then in some of the opinions by the residents of that neighborhood, so I'll I'll let Mister Cap adjust those uh as best he can.
Thank you. So I don't, um I my comments are tightly organized, I try to be concise. The hour is late, I understand, everybody likes to get home early, um but where to begin? As a. Member of this um commission, uh I certainly am aware of. Um villages' ordinances, the villages' ordinances, as well as the villages' approach to. Doing things. And I. Couldn't imagine that I would be as immersed in the community as I have, but that happens when we live here for a while. Uh to start in, I did not receive a notice. In the mail. That my property was going to be rezoned as part of this, so. Um you know, we can talk about um whether or not it's a failing on the staff's part. Or whether it's a failing on the part of the United States Postal Service, don't wanna get into that. My my familiarity with this uh this whole issue came about when. Uh the Monday before our um last meeting. Um Valerie called, or maybe I called her to inform her that I was not going to. Attend that meeting that. Following Thursday, three days ahead, so she was. Um then curious about what my response uh might have been to all of this, and quite frankly. Uh to be honest, since I wasn't um gonna come close to being able to attend the meeting. Um you know, I figured it would be a moot point, wouldn't worry about it, let everybody take care of it, not a prop. But in the course of a rather lengthy conversation with her. Um it it started to intrigue me, and. I my first question to her was, what really is the motivation for this? What is the impetus, what 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 event triggered this? Was it? Just for clarification, the petition of an individual property owner? Or something that he wanted to do on his property, or was it? As Valerie uh certainly said, it was an action taken um by the staff, because they noticed, oh, by the way. That there are these um uh non-conformities in the new zo- zoning. Uh ordinance as it affected parts of our neighborhood, and at um at that point, I started to. Get a little bit more intrigued, because um in the course, going back two years, when we embarked on our new. Um the process to enact a new zoning ordinance, um Bill. Commissioner, member O'Brien mentioned that uh the uh our consultant. I would say touted their uh uh ability to do this lot analysis, and it had, as I recall. Many purposes, not just to identify potential um. Uh building sites going forward, but it was as much, in fact, that was probably one of the first meetings. Um as I recalled, um they made a point about anytime you fiddle with the zoning ordinance. You you have to pay attention to how any proposed adjustments. Are made in the standards, because the whole idea um of changing a zoning ordinance, if if. A community has a lot of, has to hear a lot of requests for variances, that's usually a. An indication that there's a a little bit of cognitive dissonance between. Um the zoning ordinance and the existing conditions, you know, s- something needs to. You know, something needs to be brought in better alignment, you know, which is certainly fine, understandable, but as I recall, going back to the slot analysis, and in fact, I'd be willing to to bet that I explicitly asked the question of Jackie, I think. Are we going to be creating any little pockets like this of non-conforming neighborhoods? And the obvious answer is, well, you can't assume that we're gonna have a hundred percent assurance that this won't happen, but, I mean, what I, what I took with her assurance was they were gonna pay attention to something like this. Quite frankly, I mean, that was certainly assurance enough for me. What, what you were describing, Liz, is, you know, this is an example of getting to know not just, well, beyond the test drive, let's say, of our zoning ordinance, getting to realize that it's a living and breathing, breathing document, and how we, how we end up operating it going forward. But, but again, at this point, just to summarize, so what, what really, what really prompted this? Was it petition, or the need for one particular person, one of those properties, to satisfy his desire to build a garage, add an apron, yada, yada, yada. So at face value, just take the time out and think about it, that could have, as Chairman Protem Bransky indicated, that could have been accomplished by a variance very easily. To look at the big picture and say, oh, gosh, we have a bigger problem that we have to, I guess we're not aware of it. Maybe we need to address this, you know, we have all these other fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen legal non-conformities. Maybe we ought to rectify this, and at that point, just to rephrase the question, what really is the motivation here? To take care of one guy, or, I'm gonna be very blunt about this, correct a defect that surely somebody knew about this when we were going through the process, and we're all complicit in that. We, I suppose, could say we were relying on our consultant, who was giving us the assurances that something like this would not have happened. Well, it did, you know, shame on me as much as anybody for not, I suppose, how, how many single, or, yeah, single-family properties do we have in the village? A few thousand, right? Would you say? So shame on us for not going property by property, subdivision by subdivision, looking at that for conformance between the the zoning ordinance, these former zoning classifications, and what was going forward. It just, I, I don't know, it kind of annoyed me, and in that conversation with Valerie, I did ask, much like some of you already here asked this evening, do we have a hundred percent assurance that we're not gonna have this? Encounter this again going forward? I don't know, I, my, I thought the consultant that we had with the zoning ordinance was good, I liked the process, I liked how they handled everything. I, at face value, completely accepted their assurance that we wouldn't have something like this happen. And I, I, for one, certainly, as I said, what's the purpose here? To correct a glaring error in our, in our zoning ordinance, or to provide some relief in a reasonable way for a homeowner? I mean, that's something to ponder when you, when, when look to vote this evening. Now, one other comment I'd like to mention here. This was included in a more prominent way in the packet, as I recall, for the prior meeting. But it is the situation of a house that is next to mine, at twenty-one forty-three Ridge Road. And Valerie correctly identified that this is of all of these parcels here, and in, in this particular neighborhood, this is the only one that is available for potential development. Now, just to
I think we probably should caution ourselves that we shouldn't direct our comments in particular address persons of address.
Well, it's a rental property, it's double lots. What's, well, here, about fifteen years ago, there was a wave, those of you who were on the either plant commissioner zone, zone board, there was a wave of these resubdivisions and requests for variances and whatever, and what people were doing was taking a large lot, a few of them were in, in the neighborhood here, Seth, and literally taking the sword to them and, and parceling them out, and, and what was one grand estate might be, might have become three three separate lots or two lots, whatever, depending on the particular case. And that happened not just in this neighborhood, but all over. In the, the particular case that I'm referring to, what, what became apparent at that time and needed a remedy was that there are two, actually, there were two parcels east of me that were not, not encumbered by the three flats that were built at the corner of Ridge and Park. And the reason I bring this up is that, and everybody, I'm sure, I mean, I'm looking at Seth's, yeah, it's fine. But that lot is big only because it had to be consolidated, it had to be consolidated for the previous owner to build a garage on the property, but what made this particular situation more complicated is that the eastern fifty feet of it was zoned R3 for multifamily. And the, the western half where the house is, and that house is probably a hundred and ten years old, that house was zoned R1. My point is, that was quite contentious at the time. Certainly, the neighborhood was more concerned that the consolidated lot would have become our three zoning, allowing another couple of three flats, totally separate issue. The point is, of all of these lots here, that one, that parcel in particular is the only one that offers any kind of opportunity for new construction under the, the new zoning code. So it seems like another reason for this rezoning at this time, therefore, would make it much easier for that property owner to subsequently resubdivide his property. So it brings me back to my initial question. What really is the purpose being served here? And there are different, I mean, what is the purpose here? Is the purpose to give the, the one petitioner who wanted to build a garage and an apron the ability to do so? Couldn't do it because of the zoning classification, the remedy for that is taking chances in, in applying, in, in trying to secure a variance. If, however, the, the purpose is to correct something that somebody noticed with our new zoning ordinance, that, that almost strikes me as it's, it's almost embarrassing, especially in, in the context of, I mean, I, from my recollection, I specifically asked the question, are we going to have any non-conformities in this new ordinance? For instance, maybe a better way to say this, if this is an issue with these fourteen lots, why wasn't the, why wasn't the suggestion made when we're in the process to, oh, by the way, let's rezone these from R1 to R2 because they'll be in better conformance with the, with the new zoning ordinance? I'm, I'm just, as I said, I was complicit too, I thought I was asking pointed questions and getting pointed answers, and clearly I wasn't. I don't know, the, the whole process has left me I, 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 I'm not quite sure that we're getting the right answers, maybe that's, that's a better way to say it. And going forward, heaven forbid, we have to be more explicit and specific in the, in the nature of our questions, but maybe, maybe, maybe this is the, the takeaway, the learning process here, the lesson that, that we take away. Now, as to issues like flooding and whatever, I'm not trying to say that properties here are prone to flooding, I think, over time, I've lived there a very long time already. Village has made great strides in improving things. There's the issue of surface water flooding, and then also sanitary sewer flooding. And in both cases, as I said, improvements have been made. Clearly, the concern about increasing the imperviousness of a property, which would lead to increased runoff, which could tax things, of course, is, is a concern, and of course, is valid. But I, I don't necessarily see that as a big issue. I think it was you, Seth, who mentioned that this is a mature neighborhood. The the houses here, my house is probably ninety-two years old. The reason I, or maybe even older, the reason I bring that up is that we're, we're sort of fixed here. The neighborhood is sort of fixed. There's really not a whole lot, especially on, on these smaller lots like this. There's not really a whole lot that we could do, or even envision doing to improve things, you know, because right off the bat, there just isn't the space for it. We can't even contemplate increasing the imperviousness of something, because there literally isn't a whole lot of space.
One suggestion, it's after nine.
Yeah, I was looking at the time. Well, I think we can take a vote on this as proposed in the language of the proposed motion. But I think it was noted in the previous meeting that we wanted to give Member Cap a chance to catch up to us, and we wanted to hear his comments, so that's why I wanted to make sure we gave him an opportunity to do that.
I'm very grateful for that.
With that said, aside from your concerns of process, I guess my, my question, which I still, still an open question to me, as a resident, affected resident, how is this rezoning negatively or positively affecting your property?
Well, well, that's not really the question, is.
Well, it's indicative of what's going on in the, in, in the rezoning of these properties that weren't subject to the written original proposed change of a, of a parking pad.
When you say, how is this zoning affecting the property?
Well, it's not the issue, but where? It, changing from an R1 to R2 is either going to make it easier for these properties to make modifications without having not, existing non-conformities encumber them on their path to achieving those modifications, or it's gonna make it more difficult for them to do that, it's one or the other. So what's the purpose, what other, what other purpose would there be to do it? I think that's, that's what Member Cap was trying to make the point of, what's the purpose for the rezoning? Well, how does it affect you as a, as a resident? It's a fair question, since we don't have any other residents here, and he's the only one that is here, I'm interested in his answer, to be honest.
No, I, I think we're, I understand what you're saying, I, I think the question, the problem with that is that we're not, we're I, I've heard all the conversation about the motivations of our for doing this, why the applicants here. I guess the question of proper notice is, is a good question. If there wasn't proper notice, I guess that's something that should be addressed. But there are no residents here asking questions outside of Member Cap. The motivation thing, I, I, I just can't, that, that's just something that bothers me, when we question the motivation of the staff and other members who are taking a proactive stance to address the, the issue that they found, rather than waiting for possibly sixteen or seventeen cases in the future. Seeing when the issue is and bringing it forward, for discussion, without ascribing some poor motivation. The purpose of this has already been laid out in explicit detail, which is why, why this came about. Yet we're, we spent twenty minutes talking about motivations and why people did what they did. I see no, no
Well, that's, that's why I'm trying to cut to the question of, how does this affect you?
But, but we seem to be, we seem to be covering everything but that, and talk about what we, you know, in hindsight, what we should the, the thing that really got me was, how were we supposed to stop, we're in the middle of, midst of redoing our zoning ordinance, but we were supposed to stop and cover an issue with these properties? The rezoning of R2 is from an R1 to an R2. At what point of that process were we supposed to stop and take care of that issue, and then come back?
I think that's
We weren't, we weren't, we
That, I'm just making a couple of points, and, and then we can, we can go. And, and so that, that, and, and so I don't understand how we didn't come complicit in any of this, because that, that just wasn't. Nobody has, you know, has that sort of foresight to be able to do, to look ahead. I think it's, I, I think the staff are commended for seeing this as an issue, bringing it to our attention. Whether it's, whether it came through one applicant or not, it was an applicant brought it to the staff's attention, why? Well, look at this, this is something we ought to be thinking about, we shouldn't be criticizing the staff because
I'm not critic, critic, not criticizing anybody, but what I am critical, more critical of, is that I explicitly asked this question very early on of our consultant. And, and the answer she gave me was, if we find something like that, and I, I've seen this happen in other communities, and we may have had that, this isn't the first zoning ordinance revision that we've gone through. The answer was, we will address this at the very end, when
When you're finished, I have something to say.
When we are identifying as part of our analysis, when it's completed, whether or not we have individual lots or pockets of lots that may or may not be appropriate for the zoning classification that they're currently in, and we may make the recommendation, therefore, to adjust them. So my point is, and this is why I say we're complicit, I'm complicit in that. I accepted what she said, I suppose I should have, could have sat down and, and paid lots more attention to how it affected me personally, which I didn't. But I feel, I, I'm not using the word deceived, but But I feel, I, I'm not using the word deceived, but the, the level of trust I had in my, uh, in our consultant, I suppose I'm using the word tarnished. I relied on, um, their answer and their expertise at something like this. And clearly, Valerie's motivation is to correct this. You're absolutely right. We should probably commend her for it. We shouldn't have to be doing this in the first place if we're just five months after, uh, taking the test drive on a new zoning ordinance.
Can I say something? You, you, you're an expert in this area. Could you talk, uh, talk to us about what consultants do with it? And how I, and, and you had the most conversations with the consultant and what she's engaged to do. And there's nothing in my mind that says the consultant was to know how to do this.
That the analysis, yeah, I mean, we were focused on when, I mean, maybe this is staff's, um, issue. But when we hired the consultant, we were looking at the text of the zoning code, number one. Number two, looking at our commercial districts and our, um, retail, our core retail district and the boundaries of that. That was one of the objectives. When, when the consultant did the study for the single-family residential zoning, it wasn't to rezone areas. It was to take a look at whether the width and area that were in the existing R one and R two were, um, were, were adequate and were, how many non-conformities there were with that. This issue, this area wasn't rezoned at all. It wasn't identified. It was, nothing in the new zoning code created this issue. Um, this is just.
Not saying it was, but it was what I, and I'm not disagreeing with that or disputing that whatsoever. But I was under the assumption, maybe I didn't ask my questions explicitly enough. But, um, the way this lot analysis and the one that you, the way you're describing it now, Angela, the way I understood that was that they were gonna look at whether it was a random sample. Maybe they were gonna focus specifically on places. They were going to look for, and I can't use this word conformity, but I'm gonna use the word congruence between what exists, what exists now and what would, would, uh, exist under the, uh, under the proposed zoning ordinance. And again, I, 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 I remember distinctly, they were talking about, well, you know, there, um, for instance, we had that, um, um, that vacant lot on a hundred eighty-third street near Morris. And, and that vacant, why was it vacant? Well, it was platted back in the nineteen twenties when the, um, uh, the width of the lots were much narrower than what we might consider now. And it remained unbuilt because it was, uh, non-conforming.
I, I, I guess my question, and, and this is a point of education for me. I, I, I just don't know. I, I did not envision, not envision, but the engagement would have covered so what was just said, and that is that we're not, uh, engagement, the purpose of the engagement was not to go around and look at every non-conforming lot in the village at home.
Yeah.
I never, I never thought that to be the case.
Well, just coming back to it, the whole idea when you do a rezoning, uh, a motivation for that, not just to update standards, but it sometimes is warranted if the number of, uh, variance cases suddenly and dramatically increases. And that shows a misfit between the, the standards of the community and what exists. I mean, we're a mature community, uh, incorporated eighteen ninety-three. So, I mean, we have to deal with the existing conditions. However, however, with the new zoning ordinance, and I know I had conversations with, um, uh, Jackie about it. When you go through this process and create new standards, not necessarily creating new zoning districts, but you create new standards. One has to be aware of whether or not those new standards might create a whole class of potential, um, variances, possibilities for.
But that, that didn't happen though, right? That did not happen.
No, I, I, I think that, yeah.
The exact opposite. I, I mean, that, that makes you, that didn't happen.
Not exactly, because here, why are we rezoning this?
Because you found, you found, you found.
I didn't find it. Should the consultant have alerted us? My point is, but should not our consultant have alerted us to, oh, by the way, you know, this is a sleeping dog.
Well, I wouldn't call it a, yeah, I, I think we have a map that shows it. We have a map that shows, that shows this area is not performing. I, I mean.
So what is the consultant supposed to do?
Yeah, that would have been up to us to say.
Well, wouldn't it have been equally, um, uh, appropriate for the consultant to say, you know, we're making all of these changes anyway?
It would have, I mean, either way.
I mean, it could, yeah.
Well.
I was gonna say that.
It could have been, it could have been us.
Didn't happen, right?
So.
I mean, someone could have said it at the time, but that wasn't really our focus.
Yeah, clearly there's, there's dissatisfaction on the process.
Yeah.
And whether or not there might have been one motivation versus another, or the thoroughness of the review.
I, I don't understand. May, maybe I'll learn this one day. I, 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 I just don't understand how a consultant can be charged with. Um, I mean, we, we will find, I, I'm assuming that we will find out and find the formies in the village in the future.
Well, I don't think that the consultant was charged with making us non-conforming proof. But I think Mike's point is here is a substantial group of properties that are, are now, you know, a problem, a problem by the rezoning.
They, they, the zoning code changes did not impact this at all. This has been like this forever.
I understand. I'm acknowledging that.
And, and it's on the map that they gave us with the lots, but we just didn't identify it as something we wanted them to focus.
They were, the study was about lots that could be broken down.
We're dealing with it now.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't.
So.
I'd like to jump in and say something, if it's possible.
We're doing, we're covering it like now.
Yeah, member O'Brien, you have a comment?
This is a sad situation in a way because it involves, um, something I've mentioned before. There's a dismissive attitude about the commission. And I'll give you the example that I mentioned before. A case came in, an individual came in, paid his fee, case number was issued. There was discussion, there's always discussion between an applicant and staff. However, in this instance, staff made a decision to move forward with something. Why? That is, that, that to me is the problem. A case was issued, I mean, a number was issued, we had an applicant, the fee was paid. It should have been simple, that individual come here. I would have given that individual a variance. I'll give you one example, the house on a hundred and seventy-fifth street, three doors west of the mobile gas station. It has a thirty-foot cliff in back of it, and we have given several, uh, uh, variances to that particular piece of property. There are unusual pieces of property in the village. If that individual had come forward, pled his case, I would have no problem in issuing him a variance for that path he wanted to do. And all of this would never have occurred, none of this. The work of this case, the meeting tonight, the meeting last week or, or two weeks ago, that to me is the crux of the problem, the dismissiveness and what information comes here and what information comes out of this in the form of minutes.
Well.
Why is that a problem? I mean.
Yeah, I don't.
Well.
Okay, how can I, okay, I could go back and enumerate it, but the most obvious example are the loose ends. Those were fifteen issues, questions asked, material requested. It, it, it was dismissed. Then when I made that list, I went back to the beginning and I made that list. And those items were discussed one by one. We, we drilled consensus, three of those items reversed what the consultant was recommending. So there was a worth to it. Why did we lose sight of those? That's dismissive.
Well.
In other words, we ask questions, we request information, whatever it is that we're doing here in a meeting, and it was dismissed. It was not, there was the tension not paid to it.
I, I think we're good, Jim.
Yeah, I don't think.
Get, I, I have one, one, one comment, request, Mr. Chair. We wanted to hear what member cap had to say. We have two other members who are missing tonight. So I, you know, I, I would recommend that we, you know, table this to the next meeting so that the other two members hopefully can be here. And, and we can take this issue on, because it's nine thirty and we're talking, you know, no, no.
We're deep in weeds.
It, we, we, I mean, I have not heard anything. And with due respect to everybody, I have not heard anything that convinces me that there's anything wrong with how this matter came before us. Uh, and, and what I wanted to hear tonight was, was there something that I'm missing in that process?
Yeah.
I did not hear that. That's me.
I, I, I agree with you.
And, and so I would, you know, so that we have other, so that we have more ears. Uh, uh, maybe it, and I, I don't think there's a problem with, with having all the members here.
No.
But I, I, I'm gonna go back home and I'm gonna, no, I can't, I, I'm gonna read this again. I just, I, I.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think we've, I think we've traveled on a tangent and gotten deep in the weeds.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think anybody has a clear vision here. Um, I'll ask for the fourth time, uh, to your point. We've, we've heard about motivations, we've heard about potential dismissiveness. I still haven't gotten an answer to the question of how does this negatively affect the residents? Cause it appears to me that it cleans up, it's an attempt to clean up non-conforming properties and make them more viable for future improvements. Um, and I think that was the intent of staff. When they saw, hey, look at this, here's a, 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 a property in this neighborhood and there's multiple properties in the neighborhood with the exact same, a problem, let's clean it up. But there's issues with that. I'd like to see some of the other residents get in here if they have negative, uh, um, standpoints on this and, and put them before us, but, um, they're not here. So, uh, in the interest of time and of regaining clarity on the, on the, the, the materials, uh, with the understanding that we're not asking for more information, nor are we asking for clarification of what's been presented. We're just looking for time to, uh, reexamine and, um, uh, hear more, um, clear input at the next meeting about this case, uh, that I'll entertain a motion to continue it.
Make that motion.
Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by member Johnson, seconded by member Cap.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
No.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Bransky?
Yes. So, uh, at the next meeting, we potentially will see the, um, second salon case come back before us.
Yes.
Potentially. Uh, hopefully with improvement, with, uh, more information or clarification about requirements. And, uh, I would urge everybody on the board between now and the next meeting to reread the materials that have been presented on this third case. Um, write down any specific questions you have so that we can pose them to staff or to hopefully, uh, affected property owners um, and get some clarification on how this rezoning really affects that neighborhood and make a clear decision. With that, I'll entertain motions to, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Motion. I'll second it.
Contributed by Johnson, seconded by Cap with a strong third by Cassidy.
Put you guys up there.
Roll call, please.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Bransky?
Yes, and I'll make a reminder to everybody to remember your, uh, commission rules. And any discussion outside of this meeting numbering more than two people, uh, you're having a meeting, so don't do that. All right, we take.